Let's call the meeting to order. It's more so please. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March called two thousand twenty order suspending service provisions. By the open meeting law, GL chapter thirty eight, section eighteen and the governor and Governor Hillis, March twenty nine. Two thousand twenty three revised order extending remote participation by all members. Any meeting of the public body, this meeting of the select board. And flaming board will be conducted while in person via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public. Their parties with the rights or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town website. Committee members and members of the public may attend this meeting in person or remotely. Discussion from remote access can be found. On the agenda, every effort will be made to ensure that those attending remotely can access proceedings in real time via technological means. Soon to MGL seven C thirty eight twenty F. In order by the chair of the public body, in person, they make a video audio recording. Of an open session of the meeting of the public body, they transmit the meeting through any medium. Beginning of the meeting, the chair will inform other attendees of any such recording. Meetings are being recorded by the Berkshire Edge, County Reserving and in the Berkshire Eagle. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. Listing of agenda items of those recently anticipated by the chair will maybe discuss at the meeting. Not all items listed may be discussed, other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Start with the select board only portion of the meeting, select boards announcements, statements, Ben?
Uh, I just wanted to give a quick. Shout out to Stunt the Beautiful and they have put together a website called whose time water action, which. Has a collection of resources that are available to the town as well as links for filing complaints, it's also trying to collect data. From his time of water customers. In a way to actually kind of map out and visualize where the kind of chronic instances are. Thing can be really, you know, that's one of the frustrating things about this is. Knowing exactly where and who is having issues at a given time. So in addition to filing complaints with our Board of Health and our health agent, I hope people will check out the website to. Log therapy points.
Governor?
Just said, I was up. To the lake, it hadn't been up till late man, feels nice, they did all their. Beautiful work and I have to say it's beautiful and it looks very, really nice and I have to admit I wasn't. Really favorable at first, but they've done a wonderful job. It's very nice.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, a few things, I had the opportunity to go to Mass Mocha this past weekend. And I went to an exhibit called the Plastic Bag Store and. Although it was pretty depressing, it was also educational and had a twist. All the single use plastic items that we use. Significant amount in our everyday life and I suggest everybody go out and see it's pretty educational and interesting. The second part of that statement is this weekend with the HIC. We will also be handing out cases of single serving water bottles for. Everybody, we have about fifty cases of them and we're going to be handing them out this weekend. On Saturday around eleven o'clock at Alice Babriski Park. Um, for whose tonic water members who have water issues. And it's kind of like a conflicting thing for me because. Single use bottles are horrible, but yet a lot of people in whose town have horrible water. And a lot of the seniors have a hard time lifting anything bigger than a single serving water bottle, so. Um, that will be available this weekend and.
Uh, few things, on Sunday, I was grateful to attend and participate in the eightieth. Anniversary of the Massachusetts Baptist Church celebration, so they've been around eighty years. And it's the oldest black Baptist church in the Brookshires and it was quite a ceremony, we had. Members of our patient community join us for meal afterwards and Reverend Matty Conway was the pastor and it was just a really, really beautiful celebration, so. Just want to let people know that they have services every Sunday at eleven AM and it's open to any faith. And they're just tucked away on Rossiter Street, so I just want to. Give a shout out to the the congregants there, um. Also, I've been, um. I'm, um, been meeting with the Brookside Neighbors Group, uh, which as we know are very concerned about what's happening with the bridges. And there is, I think. Not to be speaking of this, but there is a chance that we're going to be having them on the October seventh agenda because I think they were very, um. Anxious to to have, you know, that on the agenda, so we could talk about in production of a very. Bigger discussion, so that's coming up. On September sixteenth, I have attended the PCB Citizens Advisory Meeting in downtown Lee. And again, this is a group keeping an eye on the transportation plan and the quality of life compliance plan. And wanted to let everyone know that on Thursday, October tenth. From six thirty to eight thirty PM. Will be a presentation by the EPA about airborne and PCB's air sampling. And again, that's going to be the we and middle high school. Uh, Thursday, October tenth at six thirty and again, this is a presentation, actually, sorry, by the EPA. And it'll be talking about airborne and PCB's air sampling. And I think that is it.
Great. Public hearing. Petition of Mass Electric Massachusetts Electric Company deviating national grid of North Andover. May ask for the electrical conduit location number three oh seven four eight three oh two. National Grid is to install underground facilities at Metal Street beginning at point approximately. Two hundred fifteen feet west of the centerline, the intersection of Front Street and continue approximately thirty feet in a southeast direction. National Grid is requesting. To install underground infrastructure along Metal Street from existing hole three to private property in order to provide electric service. The project at the former Uzutomic School, government motion to open the public hearing.
Send it. Steve, I'm gonna recuse myself since I worked closely with National Grid and the dealer.
Thanks. Do I have a second?
Second.
So a motion, a second, it's a roll call, roll back.
Aye.
Garfield.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
And I. Explanation of the project, come right up.
Everybody, I am Steve Ayrton for National Grid. Um, lucky for me that the information that Steve Ayrton just gave pretty much summarizes the scope of what we're looking to do. Um, so on Meadow Street there at the corner, we have pole number three and off of that pole, we are hoping. To have some underground infrastructure installed. And from that, we'll be giving electric service to the projects of the old Blue Pine School.
Thanks. Anyone have public comments, anyone who wants to speak in favor or opposition? Saying no one. Questions from the select board?
This is a hookup for the the units going into the old school building essentially.
Correct.
Nothing that would be used for the park exceptions for the development of the school.
Right. Anyone else? Wanting to close the public hearings?
Send it.
Down the side.
There.
Roll call, roll back.
Aye.
Garfield.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
And I, any discussion from the select board? Motion please.
Uh, I move to approve. The petition of National Grid for the electrical conduit location number three oh seven four eight three oh two.
Have a sec.
Then.
So a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. Roll call, roll back.
Aye.
Garfield.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
And I. Thank you very much. Next part of this is called the order of the joint session with the flaming board.
Uh, Eric.
Uh, is he right there, he's right there. And. Turn it over to Brandon.
Sure, uh, let's see, procedurally, do we have to call this order? We're all here, the whole planning. What's up? Sure, so, um, well, if we can just go around the rooms, I'm Brandy Nelson, I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. And to my left, we'll just keep on left.
Edgar Pachano.
And our associate member Jackie is not with us today. Um, thank you for entertaining us for a joint meeting, um, our two boards. I look back through my notes, I think the last time we got together was in January, so it's nice to do this a couple times a year. Um, and. Uh, what we wanted to do tonight is, um, I don't know, Chris, if you had an intro that you wanted to do, but, um. You wrote a great memo, but it's just real high level. Um. The town has been working under the master plan that was put together and adopted in two thousand thirteen. Um, Mass General Law, which in our packets, Chris has provided us, the section of Mass General Law empowers. The planning board to put together a master plan and from time to time, I think the language is perfected, so. Um, as you all know, because we met and talked about this in January and then I was back before you guys, uh, about that time individually representing the planning board. Um, with a ten year old master plan and with all the work, all the boards and committees have been doing over that last ten years. We've made great progress in implementation, but we also recognize that there have been changes in the community. Particularly within the last five years related to the COVID pandemic and changes in our demography. Um, and. Although the planning board is currently in progress, we're reviewing sort of section by section. Uh, I think what we've realized is that it is likely we need to do either substantial update or maybe just an overhaul. And that that will require resources beyond what the planning board has access to. Um, so we wanted to have a discussion with you about that evening. Um, and see if we could get not into the weeds on what the changes would be necessarily. But specifically a direction as to whether or not we want to do an updated master plan. Or we want to sort of do a full overhaul of the master plan and then. Um, talk with you about what it would take in terms of staff resources and funding resources to make that happen, of course, we'll look for grants and things. Chris has put together a tremendous memo, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read through it, but. He's basically captured the last nine months of discussions that we've had and also dug into the, um. To the archives of what's happened in the community over the last ten years and provided a really solid synopsis. Um, so thank you, Chris, for doing that, we appreciate you tremendously. Um, but I guess with that, I would see, Chris, if you had anything further you wanted to add?
Sure, thanks, Brandy, uh, just briefly, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Chris Rambold, Assistant Town Manager and Planning Director. Um, I I'm so glad you all could find the night, but worked for both boards, uh, the planning board's been talking about the master plan for quite a while now, at least a year. Uh, and the master plan's been on the select board priority list for quite a while as well. And so it's good to have the two doors meeting again to to review. As Brady said, our demography is changing, the population is growing, as is our housing stock and population's also aging. Um, housing is, and this is not for any of you, but housing is getting just much more expensive across the board. Taxes and home values are increasing dramatically. Um, with many people being priced out or shut out of the town and we've talked about the impacts that that has had. On, um, our employers included, not to mention the town itself. Um, our businesses and community services. Police, fire, ambulance, et cetera, including the healthcare sectors and the service sectors become so. Big impacts there. And there is emerging issues, including climate change, that's something the planning board has been talking a little bit about. Um, extreme weather events, other crises, and we saw previews of that during COVID, we certainly saw the impacts of. What a shock can do to the community, particularly those people who, um. Are kind of on the front lines of of our community in essential services and providing. Those essential services in in health, uh, in healthcare. Um, so any shock to housing prices, to to health, to the energy sector, extreme weather events. Any of those things can can really have an impact. On the community. And it's not something that we have, we've talked about in the past, and the planning board has had some discussions about resiliency. And through a few municipal vulnerability preparedness grants, uh, the town has had some of these discussions. About building relationships with the community, community wide, particularly people who are. Um, tend to be less represented in our community. And building those relationships and in some cases repairing relationships is really critical to. Um, understanding what people need and and who they are and where they are. And how the community should evolve by. Food access or. Housing, transportation, and more access to parks. Um, all these things have have become really important and we see those become really important during times of crisis especially. The the last master plan set out. For emerging issues that that are challenging the town and I think all four of them are still present. Um, let's not say we haven't solved them or haven't worked on them, we're just the big issues. Aging infrastructure, certainly, uh, it's a lot of our time, whether that's bridges, roads, and of course, the Houston border wars. Um, changing in the graphics. Economic shifts and climate change, each of those is still present and probably still something, some things that bear discussion. Um. So with these two boards, if and when. Town decides to update the master plan, write a new master plan for these two boards. Absolutely are critical to be at the table, as Brady said, the planning board is by law the statutory authority that creates and adopts plans. But obviously, things can't get done without select board support. Directions to the town manager and to staff. Budgetary support, support of other boards and committees, so Sean. Both boards need really to be aligned and if a master plan is ready to be written, developed and eventually implemented, so. I'm really glad you could all be here tonight to to begin that discussion. I'll stop there.
And there's no doubt in my mind that we need to. Update or redo the master plan, I think that's. That's pretty obvious, a lot of work went into it, it's a current damage plan, to just leave it the way it is without updating it or redoing it. Would be just ridiculous, I think it's just a matter now to discuss how we're going to do it and the timeline for doing it. So, um, you know, I I'm all in favor of. The planning board leading the way and having another committee like we had the last time to really dig into it and do the entire master plan. But, you know, that's, I think everyone's decision tonight to talk this out and see what's best.
Well, my second being what Stephen said. I think it's a great idea and I like the idea of having a committee as well.
Um, so if I remember, it's a award winning plan, master plan, is that true? So kudos to, I think Shannon was on it and obviously Chris.
Michael Wise.
Michael Wise. Um, and so thanks very much and it's it's done, it served us well, uh, so absolutely, I think we are in dire need of an update, um, if not a whole revamp. Uh, one request would be, um, at the same time, if we could also look at the housing needs assessment. Because I I think that was done in two thousand eighteen nineteen, it would be something that maybe we could do together. Um, because that was just before, you know, obviously with the COVID head and a lot of shifts happened right after, um, the housing needs assessment was. Published, so, you know, maybe we can get, um, a little bit bang for our buck if we are going to be talking, you know, tapping into BRPC or looking for. Um, CPA funding, maybe we can have the two of them, you know, go on a parallel track.
I I appreciate that, yeah, we, um, we actually, one thing we've been trying to do is we go through the current master plan is to see. Um, what other plans have been developed so that we can use them leveraged into the new plan or the updated plan. Um, I think it just at our last meeting, we had a discussion as to whether or not the housing needs assessment just should be overhauled. Because it it was pre-COVID and so much has shifted since then, so that's something that, yeah, we agree with you, we've kicked that around a little bit.
And we're now at ten percent, so.
And we are at ten percent now, so that's good, congratulations to everyone for working hard on that, but there's more to be done, so, yeah. Thank you.
Yes, I would just start with a question of saying, as far as since you. Uh, the planning board have been discussing this a lot, what what are the feelings of the planning board, are we. You guys leaning towards a complete overhaul or just updating? Uh, that's we have an update.
Yeah, so our process so far has been, you know, first to try and take stock, so the progress update summary that Chris has provided with the packet is from last fall and that's kind of what kicked this off for us. Um, and just seeing already how many new committees have been formed since then, how many demographic shifts there have been. Changes in the housing market, all of those things, I think, speaking for myself, we, I don't think we've come to a full consensus on it yet, we wanted to engage with you guys first, but. I think it's probably a a. A a total refresh, you know, I think there's good baseline information we can build off of. Um, but I think there's a lot that has changed in the community that needs to still be addressed. Yeah, moving forward, looking forward into the next decade or so.
Um, one thing that came to mind is, you know, I I'm thinking regionally a lot and, um, you know, obviously it's a town master plan, it's not a regional master plan, but we might. Um, benefit from being informed from other master plans and maybe talking to other towns and and looking more regionally this time. Um, how to approach challenges, you know. Moving forward, I think strengths, weaknesses, but I think, you know, possibly looking a little more regional this time, you know, obviously, because in Great Barrington, but being informed by other towns.
You guys were never quiet. And that's a compliment.
I just wanted to jump in. Chris, when you talked about. Uh. The average sale price of a house. Which is not a meaningful. Uh. Term because we don't talk about the average age, we talk about a median age. And so this, this, you, I don't know if it's accurate or not, but. You've got a five to five million dollar sale in the element. Which completely screws everything up, the the median price based on what Realtors sold, which is probably ninety nine percent. Uh. Is five hundred and fifteen thousand. So it's better to use that than these scary numbers that mean.
Five hundred and fifteen?
Yeah. Those are twenty twenty three.
Still, still a big number, so. For the average person, yeah, yeah.
Right, is that from that, where's that from? Because I always find there's different sources and I never find out what.
So, um, if if you all are generally supportive of moving forward, I think, you know, as as you're. Thinking about budget planning in the coming season, you know, we like to, um. I I think we'll have to rely on Chris and maybe we can discuss it a little bit at our meeting, we've got the master plan right now as a standing item on our agenda, so. Uh, maybe we can talk about what we think it would take in terms of resources and then. We started to look for grant finding opportunities, recognizing, you know, we have a lot of. Demand on our limited financial resources here in the town, so if we can align and find a a grant source that would be beneficial as well. But I think in the meantime, what the planning board intends to do is. To continue going chapter by chapter through the master plan, we're making notes, we're sort of identifying what issues have sort of risen up for all of us. Um, observations, commentary, what other plans have been produced. Um, and our goal then was to sort of armed with that information. Um, go out to the new boards and committees and start a community dialogue engagement, I think the master plan needs to have a formal process, but we wanted to sort of informally. See what some of the big issues are, um, rising out of, um, other boards and committees, so we have sent a letter out to all the other boards and committees just saying. We, our intention is to come meet with you in the coming months, you know, we just want to make sure the master plan is on your radar, we. In our look back, um, to boards and committees, we found that some boards and committees didn't realize that they had action items and. You know, no, no harm, no foul to anyone because we've got a ton of dedicated volunteers here in the community. Um, but just maybe having more dialogue, um, through the planning board since we're the ones, uh, charged with, um, moving the master plan forward. Uh, will be helpful, so that's, you know, a lesson we've learned that we're trying to be more communicative with the other boards and committees. Um, so that's, that's sort of where we would like to go in the next few months.
I I think that's a great approach, um, and. There's any way, just even outside of, you know, I think the organic approach with the boards and committees, but also the public at large of just really getting this out there, so people come to those boards and committees and like, that's a place you can start to gather input there. Just because, you know, so many of these projects, it can often feel like we'll work on it as, you know, internally. In town and then people will feel blindsided at the end, so just trying to get as much public input as possible.
Sure, yeah, no, I appreciate that, yeah, I mean, and if you have suggestions on, um. Means and methods that you find are effective, um, we are all ears on that because I think that's, um. Jackie, who unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight, has a a pretty strong background in public engagement, has done a lot of it and, um. Hopefully she'll stay as an associate member and we'll be able to leverage her skills to do that, but she's been very interested in helping with the public engagement strategy.
Um, have any questions?
No, go ahead.
Um, do we have kind of a sense of ballpark figure of what this costs, I mean, you know, obviously what it cost in two thousand thirteen, but between some other massive plans, we've seen that have done over town, are we talking? Tens of thousands, a hundred, you know, generally?
It's a. A ballpark estimate is is higher probably than you think it is, in two thousand thirteen, but. We were able to, I had quite a lot more time on my. Plate and used the expertise of the First Regional Planning Commission, so, um, it was essentially produced in-house at very, very cost. I think, uh, that capacity is gone, my my plate is over over full. To hire a consultant, um, and to have an intense community engagement process, which I recommend you do. It takes a lot of time and, um, even in the era of Zoom, a lot of. You know, people on the ground talking and having meetings. Um, you're talking anywhere from a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. Aspects of that, uh, could be paid with grant funds, you know. CPA funds for. The housing needs, so. Um, we're working with First Regional Planning Commission on the open space recreation plan hopefully very soon, that's obviously an element of this. So there are probably chunks of that total that we can pay in other ways. I'll work with the planning board to, uh, think about what a scope of work would look like. And, um. We can go ahead and propose something new for the next specific budget.
Would the timing be such that we could, um, have a placeholder for the community preservation committee to kind of know that this might be something that. Might be requested in terms of funding?
Yeah.
In terms of.
Yeah. Should we be able to claim something by their money? The housing needs, I think you're. I think so, yeah, yeah, we should be able to start chipping away at that sort of thing. Work with the community preservation committee and.
But I think.
Identify some potential grant sources.
Realistically, for CPA funds, it's not going to be a huge chunk of that. Right, because it's mainly just housing. And because it's all, since that's already gone, we can't go back with that, right, full request?
Um, it's housing and something space. There may be a street preservation element, CPA could help.
Yeah.
Yes. It's all of them. Yeah.
You think we can do it all?
Yeah.
And we should.
Hey. We're talking, we're going to love to have some communication from the public and public information. How did we go about, or how was it? Chosen or done back in two thousand thirteen when we had citizens on it, for I know, remember seeing Michelle Gilligan's name and. A few others on that committee, how how was that, or how did you? That or garnered in these people?
Well, we formed a committee, we're super.
Yeah, Steve, Steve, right, the select board, um, and planning board formed a committee. At the time, since this is playing with statutory responsibility and playing where it had three members in the select board had two, which was just kind of a nod that playing was statutory, it was slightly more important, but the select board is equally important. There were five other committees that. The planning board, select board thought were important to include based on issues emerging at the time. Council on Aging. Parks Commission, Conservation Commission. Historical Commission. And Agricultural Commission. That's total ten members so far and then. Five members. Just citizens at large, so it was a fifteen member committee. That committee was charged with figuring out the best. That committee was charged with figuring out the best way to approach the community. We got really lucky that the committee members resided in different parts of town, we had really good geographic distribution, and we were able to talk to different communities. Have meetings in those section, in those kind of neighborhoods. Um, some were more well attended than others. So we had a, a good conversation that way and just tried to keep people involved uh, throughout the process. So once a committee is formed, assuming you all want to do that, I think it's probably a good idea. Then um, then we can figure out what the representation of the committee should be and charge the committee with undertaking master plan, including spolting out some kind of a community outreach element, beginning, middle, and throughout the process.
Have a question.
Just come up to me where it comes.
Well, you should, so I know that the members were indefinite, as is Mr. Handken, so I take it they're no longer indefinite from the two thousand thirteen master plan?
The committee was solved essentially once that plan was adopted by these two committees.
So that it stays as they're definite members, they're no longer indefinite members, so there's no committee right now.
Right, there's no committee.
So I would like to be on the committee, for one thing, and I'm also going to point out that Mr. Rembold and Mr. Handken met in my neighborhood, despite Mr. Handken being a resident of my neighborhood, and I find that conflicting.
Thank you. I don't know at this juncture if we're ready to pull the trigger on committee yet. I think we want to maybe get through our review first.
But I, I also agree with whatever you said. I mean, we, I think we have a very good master plan and it bodes well if we follow the process that we did last time, because there was a lot of community buying. And that's the key to its success, is that every committee knew, you know, that the master plan was driving the way where, where we're going as a town. And I think uh, if we follow that same process again, and wind up with the same result.
Yes, just uh, the curiosity, the, the last master plan from, from start to finish as far as timeframe, like is this uh, when we're discussing numbers, say a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand, are we talking one budget cycle and we
Yeah.
Two years?
It's three years.
Three years, yeah. So you'd be going to the uh, town meeting and maybe asking for this in increments, or is that?
Probably a lot of it will be grants.
Grants, yeah.
So. Freddie, I think it's perfectly okay for us tonight to vote to recommend it before the committee and ask town manager and the assistant town manager to bring it back to the two boards with their recommendations. If in fact, for some reason, we decide not to, we can always change our vote, but it's hard for us to get together anyway, so while we're all here, let's give some direction. And if something changes, we can always. We're sitting.
So, eh, yeah, and I guess just uh, in this board starting and at a certain point, we'll come back and discuss whether, not come back, somebody will discuss whether it's a complete overhaul or updating.
Well, I think that's for us to decide tonight. Yeah, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the direction we want to go. I mean, we are only about fifty percent through. Um, but even in the notes, like we're all editing our copies of the master plan, even in the notes we're taking in the margins, they're pretty significant. Either completion of tasks or changes in the community that I think, you know, we're not finding wholesale sections that are, oh, we don't need to update those, like everything needs to be updated. We also, um, the master plan and particularly in the second volume has a lot of mapping. Um, and there've been land use changes, there's been new development, um, so we need uh, resources to do that, because that's not something we're going to be able to do in-house. You know, we either have to work with VRPC or work with a consultant on that, so. Yeah, I, I think, I, I mean, we can, are we leaning? I get the sense we're leaning towards a new master plan at the planning.
Well, I mean, even if we decide that tonight and we, after we filter everything through, we say, okay, well, these sections can remain, these things, you know, there's nothing says we can't.
Pull it back a little bit, yeah.
I, I, I think authorization too. Well, I get confused by the, by the discussion. The best plan is great, and it definitely needs updating. I don't think you're going to benefit from throwing it away and starting from scratch. It's just too big a job.
Yeah.
I think that you've got, you've got the bones there.
Yeah.
And you just need to update the information.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily the, like, the idea and the whole direction of the town's change. It's just the facts, some of the facts.
Maybe Chris can weigh in, but in my mind, um, if, if we were doing a limited update, it would be like an appendix that we would just add to the master plan and and so I think I agree with you Jonathan, that the bones are there and we definitely want to build off of the existing plan, plus all the other plans that have been developed in the last ten years, um, that provide new information. But I think that results in a new plan, right? Not just an appendix on the two thousand thirteen plan.
I, I, yeah, I agree, because I, you know, I think what you're saying, Jonathan, that the framework is totally there for this, but like even just the last few years, like the challenges that we're kind of facing are so, like, are outside the scope of the original, that I think you need to have that flexibility to address.
We, we started that conversation, you know, almost a year ago. You know, do we just need to do a more robust climate change section, or maybe change the housing section and then just do an appendix? But as we're getting into it, I think you know, there are changes in conservation land, there's changes in, in climate related issue. Yeah, so.
Plus a third of the action items have been done.
Yeah, yeah.
And we might see this only takes two years, not three.
In, in discussing it, it's, it's unclear, you know, if we're just going to go through and edit the whole thing and add, which I think is what Jonathan's talking about versus when we say new plan, it sounds like the whole thing's just going away and starting from scratch and.
I don't, I don't want anyone to, to, to come away from this meeting thinking we want to throw out the current plan, not at all. That is definitely, we want to build off of it. Um, and modernize it, up, update it in terms of each section, and I think because each section needs to be updated, that will result in a new plan, not just an amended plan.
Understand what you're saying.
Makes sense.
So I think there's two votes tonight. One is to, to complete update of the plan, however that's defined. And in doubt, it's right, we have to be careful with our terminology. And then the other part of that is to vote to um, recommend to form a committee. Uh, and have uh, staff come back to us, probably with the same format. It worked pretty well last time, I don't know why it would change unless somebody has some great idea why that should be different.
I hope, is there anything you would change? Uh, you, you may have uh, different boards, uh, different committees, different issues that you would want at the table. Last time it was five boards and commissions that may or may not be representative of, of emerging issues. Uh, you may want a member of the housing class. Uh, you know, or, you know. Yeah, or somebody from the transportation community, so.
And or do we want it? Yeah, or do we want someone from the business community that's recognizing economic development, or someone from the healthcare sector that can tell us what's going on in our healthcare facilities?
So remember that individual topics, people are going to be involved in that.
Additional stakeholders, yeah.
For people who have a broader
Right.
view, not just the same. Yeah, yeah, I think, uh, I think that's a good point, you know. I think if the boards agree, you know, step one is uh, let's undertake it. Step two is planning board, let's figure out what the committee looks like and let's talk about budgets. Um, but I think from the staff perspective, uh, from speaking to Mark and myself, you know, clear direction from these boards on what you want to do with the master plan and um, that's, that's where.
I think short of the motion, what we haven't done tonight, you know, we will in a few minutes. Um, I think it's, it's pretty clear that the direction we're going in right now, everyone seems to be in agreement.
I mean, one thing I would say, just thinking about, you know, regionalization is, you know, we didn't have Berkshire blueprint last time, so that would be something I would recommend. Really looking into and Berkshire's con it came out with a good blueprint as well, so just, you know, because they are, they're at our disposal now, just to, to refer to theirs as well.
Malcolm had said that um, we'd like to have some broad scope, but I may not have an issue with someone who has one thing that they're really good at, because some people are better at things than others, and this might be an area where this person could excel and help us. Um, not that they're narrow sided, but they might have a better graph or something than maybe someone else. And maybe they don't have that supervision, wide vision.
We have some
Start going like this, oh my gosh.
We have some really talented people in this community, we're going to make sure we have more committee.
Did you have a comment, Claudia?
Yeah, um, Claudia Shapiro, seven eight, I'm going to comment on what Mr. Rembold said about clear direction. I've asked both of these boards, and I'm going to ask you again while you're all together. The two thousand thirteen master plan has a Walter J. Colosta Regional Airport in it. And it was actually permitted in twenty twenty-three with the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, and the town is the host. So I'm asking again, specifically as the owner of the end of the runway, not just on my behalf. What your plans are for the regional airport, I assume Lee, that's why you're all about the region. And are we going to be waiting until you're in the state house, or is it going to be happening before? But my, my question is, what are your intentions specifically for me, my property? The neighbors that are not working and not involved with you, and specifically again, the town of North Egremont, and the people in North Egremont that are not involved and are not working with you. Can I get an answer from somebody?
It's not on the agenda for tonight, so we'd like to deal with the meeting law, if you can discuss that.
But I'm asking a question, it's not citizen speak time.
Doesn't matter, but it's nothing we've discussed as it's live, so there is no answer. We've never had more discussion of it. Do we want to try to get a motion?
Sure, um, so, um.
Is there going to be an official citizen speak time?
Yeah, that's the end. If you want to speak now, you're welcome to.
Are you sure? Okay.
Either way.
Yeah, we're not adjourning, we're.
I prefer you to.
Um, so we want a, a I guess a motion that would be by each individual board, right? So a motion on the planning board um, to um, undertake a uh, are you okay with us calling it an update? And we'll figure out what the scope of the update is, an update to the two thousand thirteen master plan?
We're already doing that, I don't know why you need a motion for it.
I know we're doing it, but a, and to form a committee, or do we want that as two separate motions?
I think that sounds good. Oh, uh, so.
Okay. Motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay.
Yes, same motion.
The second, any discussion? All in favor? Get to your numbers for the select board.
Okay, great, thank you guys.
We're planning more, and we're going to talk about community structure and budgets.
Okay.
People who are, I'm probably asking someone who serves.
Yes.
It's a big step.
It is, thank you very much. Yes.
Anything else on this?
No.
The citizens speak then.
Sounds good.
Right, name and address? Anyone online, I'll take you next.
Toby Stanton, six nine vision speak. Um, I think it's great that you all are patting yourself on the back for your planning, uh, your ultimate plan, your master plan. I think you need to be committed to in, in sort of making it happen, not just having one, but actually making it happen. Because if you go to the people of Husaton, uh, it's weird to me that you, you sit for this meeting and you keep saying Great Barrington and the town. But we are including Husaton also.
Yes.
And it needs to be included in your language, if you want the people of Husaton to hear you, because they don't believe you. You got Husaton residents paying for all the Great Barrington updates, you've got high-speed internet, we still have rotted pipes. This has been going on a long time, when I moved to Great Barrington and bought my house on Division Street, we had a road so bad that town residents were submitting their receipts to the town for repairs. Right after that, it got repaired. Two years later, maybe even a year, Fred Mercer dug up the street, didn't fill it in back properly, and we had a rut until the next time it was paved. Then we had right across the street from me, where I used to have a scenic view of the back of the mining and mountain. And now I look at pine trees that were planted because my neighbor was allowed to put up pine trees to block off his field from the street or whatever. I don't know. I am here pissed off. I lost my garage, in my garage was everything. The fire hydrant that you guys lease is supposed to be marked as a, not a fire hydrant. The fire company spent a lot of time hooking up to that fire hydrant. Tried to put out the fire with no water. Waited twenty-five minutes for who's, for Sheffield to show up with their truck. And I'm out of garage, no one to turn to. I've asked both of these boards, who is Husktonic Water Works responsible for when they do work? Who do they, you know, who inspects them? I haven't gotten an answer. I don't think you guys even know. Chris said maybe the DPU, when I met him in the parking lot. I don't know. I think a master, master plan is a great idea, but unless you get behind it, unless you get behind the people of Husaton, they don't care about it. They know you're, you're I don't know, it's so frustrating to be a part of this. I want to be on this master plan meeting, I want to be a part of this, as one of the citizens. You better believe it. I also want to tell you that I have a plan, I went through so much crap trying to figure out what I was allowed to do when I tried to get a permit to do a second story on my house, which I'm not allowed to do, it's going to cost me a lawyer, because my chances of doing it without a lawyer are smaller than that probably. So it's not possible for someone like me. If I do that, I don't sign it, I don't put windows in. It just makes my, makes it not possible. So I don't know, my frustration level is so through the roof. I want to create a position in the town where the citizens have somebody that they can go to, instead of getting kicked around from one office to the next, looking for answers for stuff. One person that can follow through on their stuff for the duration, whatever their needs are, just a person in town hall that somebody can get to when they have a problem and they're not getting answers to. I think that person should be paid ten percent higher than anybody else in this town. And I have a proposal on how to come up with the money for it, but we'll get into that later. I will start that petition, I'm co-authoring it. And do you think that's a good idea? Having a liaison for the town people?
Because of the open meeting law, we're not allowed to talk about anything that's not on the agenda?
This is talking about the master plan and having a master planned person. Assigned person for the citizens.
Having someone in charge of the master plan is going to happen anyways.
No.
Well, that's what you just said.
I want somebody, I want a liaison for the town people. To have an office in town. Do you guys agree that that would be a good idea, or are you going to go up against me on it?
Citizens petitions, I might be right to come to the annual, or any town meeting.
I just want to know if you think it's a good idea, not, would you sign my citizen petition?
I've always signed citizen petitions.
Thank you, awesome. I'll be coming to the rest of you for your signatures also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Claudia Shapiro again, so I'm going to add to my little spiel that I understand that the Colossi Great Barrington Regional General Aviation Community Business Airport needs further municipal approval. But I also know that Mr. Stanton, that Great Barrington actually formed recently, a community liaison. And when I tried to get the contact for Mr. Berhinsky, he actually jerked me around. So I'm going to get in touch with that.
Anyone else with citizens speak time? Saying no one, media time. No one by unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Thank you to the planning.